The chairman and he has a statement that he wishes to make.
Due to the appearance of a conflict of interest, I will recuse myself from the vote tonight. So, we need to elect a temporary chair. Do you have a nominee for chairman?
I move to make Rodney Kiefer temporary chairman.
Go second. Kenny. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay Rodney, your chair.
With that, there were fifteen names on the list. So, the board, the four members of the board, first I want to ask you to introduce yourself. My mic's not going to reach that far.
I'm Rod Kiefer. I reside out on Glenwood Road and been a member of Noble Township for twenty-four years or so. So, thanks for coming out today.
My name's Aaron Champ. I've been a resident of Noble Township all my life.
I'm Dave Overman. Been resident of Noble Township for probably seventy years.
Kenny Damar, I live over on one sixteen.
The next order of business is the board or the zoning commission needs to set a time limit for the applicant to present the case. I originally suggested ten minutes. And as to other members of the public that wish to address the board, we need to decide, make a motion, and how much time to give each member of the public.
I move to give the members of the public each three minutes.
I second. Could we have a vote then?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I want to do a quick, quick outline of the process. Individuals that come up and speak from the public will have those three minutes. You get to speak once. Okay, so whatever you have to say, make sure you get it in at that point. You will have already heard from the applicants, so if there are questions, you pose those to the board and the board will do their best to keep track of those questions. This is, I recognize, I'll put it this way. I've been doing township zoning work for about thirty-four years and this is by far the most highly attended meeting I've ever been associated with in the township, in the fourteen townships of August County. This is a request to rezone approximately one hundred and forty-two acres from the agricultural district to the industrial district. The process is, the zoning commission first hears this. Once they receive the request, they had to set a hearing, tonight's hearing, within twenty to forty days, no sooner than twenty nor more than forty days, from the receipt of the request. That's why we're here tonight on April tenth. In addition, the law requires that we do a publication of this hearing, which was done on March the twenty-second in the St. Mary's Evening League. Now, of course, at that time, it said that the meeting was going to be held at the Noble Township House, but it's pretty clear and evident to me, everybody got the word, that's not where it was going to be. Also, notice is required to be given to any adjoining, adjacent, contingent, across the road, or anybody within two hundred feet of the property being requested to be redistricted. All of those notices have to be done ten days prior to the hearing. Those went out on March the twenty-second. And then two more notices went out to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, both in Columbus and the local office, about a week later. But all of those are within the ten days of this hearing. The zoning commission will hear everything tonight. They can make their decision tonight, or they can wait thirty days. They have thirty days to make their decision. If they do, we convene another meeting and they have to do that in open. Once the zoning commission makes their recommendation, this is about a four-step process. This then would go to the township trustees. The township trustees are required to hold a public hearing much like this hearing tonight with the same type of notice. The zoning, the board of trustees then has, they have to have their hearing within twenty days, I'm sorry, thirty days of their receiving the recommendation. The trustees can only receive their recommendation in an open meeting. So, if they make their decision and it's three weeks until the next trustee meeting, that's when they would receive it, so there'd be a little delay in that time. They then hold their public hearing and then they have twenty days to make their determination. This request to rezone to the industrial district, as I understand it, and I think will be explained, is for the purpose of quarrying. The Noble Township zoning resolution allows quarrying as a conditional use permit in the industrial district. That means, no matter what happens here, if this is redistricted to the industrial district, the next step is for the applicants to file a petition with the Board of Zoning Appeals to request a conditional use permit before they go forward. So, there are a number of steps. This is step one and a long number of steps. Okay? Questions about the process?
Is there appeals process after that end or does that just?
There is, there is, there is not an appeal process from the decision of the zoning commission or the board of trustees. What can happen is, no matter what happens, if a certain, and I'm not going to get deep in the weeds on this, if a certain number of people sign a petition for a referendum, this can be put on the ballot to all the residents of Noble Township. There's a process that you go through. I'm not the attorney for those individuals. I represent the township and the zoning commission. So, that would be something that anybody that would want to file a referendum, you would probably want to contact your own legal counsel to make sure you're doing it properly. Okay? Alright. Nothing else, we'll get started and were you going to do introductions?
Good evening, gentlemen and everyone here. My name's Doug Ruck. I'm an attorney for two companies, Weber Building Materials, the applicant here tonight, and Weber Materials. Those are both companies that Mr. Kevin Weber, who's seated here, raise your hand Kevin, is a president and one of the owners of. We've also brought a couple of experts to address, if necessary, questions that you always hear on the application to zone with the eventual goal of quarrying. I like to call them the "not in my backyard" questions. And those are questions about wells, questions about roads, questions about blasting. So, we have a seismologist, Keith Best, there. And we also have a mining engineer, I can't see him there, Paul, he's right here, I'm sorry. Paul Lee, he's also running our slides. And we do have, because we're trying to keep things pretty short here, we have a series of slides, but this is sort of showing you overview of the property that we're looking to rezone. So, Mr. Weber is going to start and address, just to sort of explain who he is, why he's here and how he's here. And then we'll see how much time we have left and go from there.
Good evening, thanks for everybody coming. I'm going to try to move as quick as possible so that everybody can ask their questions and have time to have answers. Just a little brief history about Weber Materials and Weber Building Materials. Weber Materials started in two thousand and sixteen with me and another business partner, Mark Bader. Between the two of us, we've got thirty, forty years of piece experience in this business. We had an agreement with John Hirschfeld to take over his ready-mix operations. Sorry about that, I moved that, you can't hear me. To take over his ready-mix operations, as well as take over the sales and marketing of the stone at the stone quarry. Within that, we were to be provided about four hundred and fifty thousand tons a year, with that being about seventy thousand ton of fifty-seven, so we could supply our own ready-mix plant. After about six months into the contract, we were forced to relieve John from his duties, producing stone at the quarry. And I know at the informal meeting, he said it was due to some other reasons. It just was simply that he couldn't produce the stone. He was only able to produce about ten thousand nine hundred tons in six months. We were forced to purchase our stone from our competitors, not only for the ready-mix plants, but also for the rest of the customers that had bid projects out of that location. He was, in two thousand and sixteen, that's when everything, that's when this all fell apart, was in two thousand and sixteen. John was no longer in the ODOT program, didn't have ODOT-approved stone. It was issued about seventy EMTIA violations that year, to the tune of about thirty-three thousand dollars. We're currently making about ten thousand tons a year. Things are going well, making a lot of stones, selling a lot of stone. We felt bad about it. We met, you know, John apologized, thought he had more horsepower than that, and we just told him we wanted to fix the problem. We brought in Cornerstone Crushing out of Toledo to crush the stone for us, to meet the obligations. Cornerstone entered into a contract with John and Conag. Weber continued to have the sales and marketing at the stone quarry. The ready-mix companies were sold off to Ernst Concrete. We continued to market the stone at the quarry. Cornerstone, again, was in a contract with Conag and Calx, I assume. Calx is the landowners. And for the record, I see, get sent stuff about Weber and owning, I've never claimed to own any property here. We don't own property here. We've never said we own property here. We simply have a contract with Conag and with Calx to produce and sell the stone there. Then, that fell apart, Cornerstone, and their contract fell apart. And so, Weber Materials joined hips, me and Mark, with John, to start producing and selling the stone there. John and Conag is paid to run the scales at the facility. And Mark Bader handles all the sales and marketing for our team, and I handle the operations. We've been doing it for about four years now. We sold almost four hundred and thirty thousand tons this past year, and that's quite a bit more than we've ever been shipped out of there in a year's time. The quality and service has been very good. Our customers are happy. We're ODOT certified, we have an ODOT lab, we're in good graces with EMTIA. Weber got to the point where we need to invest some capital. Things are good, so we need to spend some money. About seven weeks ago, we were on a Zoom call with Mr. Hirschfeld and his attorney and our folks. And we told him we wanted to invest some more money. We'd like an extension on, beyond what we have now. The answer we were told on the Zoom call was, is there won't be an extension. Him and his siblings are all getting older now and that they wanted to sell at the end of our six years of the contract. Again, we don't own any of the land, never claimed to. I don't know the importance of that. But at any rate, that's what got us here today. We think that it's a natural progression, as you look at the maps, for that to progress over to that property for a variety of reasons. It gets you away from the river, gets you away from the mud seams, and gets you into a big wide open area of land. We had a mine engineer come in and do a plan for us. We made rock core samples, another hundred and twenty feet deep. The rock's good for about another hundred and sixteen feet. Then you get into some deleterious bad rock. We had a mine plan put together by Buckeye and the results were broken into several phases. Phase one and phase one A of the mine shows about nine point four years left. Phase two of the mine plan shows three point nine and additional four point one, so about another eight years on top of that. That's about seventeen point four years left. Now, that was a year ago, so maybe it's sixteen point four. So, we feel as though after about another six years, there's about ten point four years left there on what we're currently mining. I'm not talking about the rest of the property that they own. We appreciate the opportunity. We feel it's a natural progression. We want to continue to employ our people and continue to supply rock in this marketplace. And we appreciate you letting us come in and present it to you. Thank you.
Since we only have a couple of minutes left, we're going to hold, I think, on the experts, but they are, they can answer any questions that you have to address to them. I would just shoot forward to your last slide, though. Just to clarify, what Mr. Weber is saying is that a lot of the objections that we're sort of hearing, and we stay out of the social media and media and online comments, the big objection seems to be largely coming from the Hirschfeld family saying, "You don't need another quarry, you already got one." Well, I mean, obviously, that's not a valid basis to deny zoning where you already have quarry. It's all the other "not in my backyard" things that should be addressed, absolutely. But just to specifically address, this shows, and he's willing to testify to this, either here or at the trustees' meeting. If you take out river bottom, flood plain, federally designated wetlands, setbacks, burms, and everything else that limits mining, there's not nearly the mining left on this property that is being put out there in the public. It's not even close. It's what he just testified to. Whereas, if you look here, the Stoner property, it is the absolute natural progression of mining in this location, in this township. In mining, you chase the rock. The good rock goes right here. And it just so happens to be on one large contiguous, it's three parcels, but one large contiguous parcel. I mean, it's perfect for this thing to continue. Over here, you're jumping across rivers and roads, you've got a patchwork quill. It just doesn't make sense. So, that's, all the other issues, they're more than happy to address if we have additional time at the end. Thank you.
You indicated that you don't own this property. Your application says you have a lease agreement with the Stoner family. Is there a, is there an agreement to lease it, or is there in fact a lease in place?
So, there's a written option to lease.
Okay. Next. Oh, I'm sorry. There is an written option to lease. The first person to present from the public is Victoria Naderman.
Okay, I'm Vicki. I'm one of the troublemakers. I want to express my feelings about the proposed new quarry. Most of you know where Dusty and I live in relation to the existing quarry. We knew it was there when we purchased our farm in nineteen eighty-seven. We have had somewhat manageable damage, including a new well, which Mr. Hirschfeld paid for through the quarry without any problems. We've had some cracks, we've had shifting of joints, we've had some door frames cracking, things like that. We knew the chances of that happening, we knew the quarry was there. The new quality, the new proposed quarry will be much closer behind and to the west of us. There is a neighboring house owned by Ronnie Store. It would be surrounded on three sides by the new quarry. I can't imagine what Ronnie's thinking right now. We're concerned about more serious damage, truck traffic, road damage, noise, and dirt. Who's going to pay for road improvements and repairs? Who's going to pay for the lock fourteen bridge? I know it's not a truck route, but that doesn't stop them when it's the quickest route. The dirt is already happening. Last fall, test sites were drilled and it had been raining. The mud left on the road when the trucks left had to be reported to the sheriff's office and cleaned up by a trustee before anyone hit it. The quarry hasn't even been started yet. We already have our current quarry and the Buckland quarry, so why do we need a third quarry in a close proximity? Conag has enough stone for well over the years that they're saying over there. Contrary to Mr. Weber and Mr. Stoner, who have been telling people, Bruce Stoner's been going around saying that it's going to run out in five or six years. It's not five or six years of stone that's running out. It's the contract between Weber's and Mr. Hirschfeld. It's for, and they keep saying it's for the community. They want us to support local businesses, but at our neighborhood's expense. Is it fair to the many neighbors on sixty-six A or living on the water table on Samcoole Road? I think not. Where is the consideration and compassion and support for all of us? I wonder what Bob and Mary Alice Stoner are thinking right now and Wayne Samcoole. They wanted him to farm and he's selling out. I've heard rumors from very reliable source that a trustee has been saying, "It's no big deal." No big deal, it is to us. Only a handful of people received notice of this as required by law. I put it on Facebook to make sure that people knew about it and I'm very happy that all you guys have come. And I have a petition that I would like to give. There's eleven pages of people that agree with me.
Thank you, I appreciate you staying real close to the three minutes. Al Solomon.
So, you know, this don't count against my time. He said, "Three minutes," and I know that'll be tough for you. I don't, I don't consider myself a troublemaker. I just don't want a big hole in my backyard. Sorry, Mr. Weber. Does Mr. Weber, I have some questions. I'd like to present this, a copy of these. This is why I wrote it down, so I could present it to them if they would take it from me. First of all, does Mr. Weber plan on digging right away or is this just a backup of, backup if his current contract is not continued? If two quarries operate successfully at the township, does the financial benefit offset the cost of infrastructure and loss of value to surrounding properties and including roadways? Right now, John covers the cost of, cost of damages like wells and so forth. With two quarries, this opens up conflicting liability opinions, making it difficult for people to recover their costs with, if the two quarries become operational. How will landscape change, changes affect flooding in the low-ground areas on sixty-six A, Schilling Road, lock fourteen, and other roads in the area? Does Weber plant, does Mr. Weber, sorry. Does Mr. Weber plan on opening and operating the new quarry or is this just an opportunity to sell the zone property and his grinding equipment to a different company if the contract with John, Quality or whoever that might be, falls through if it's not continued? How much more dynamiting? A lot more truck traffic to the surrounding quarry areas that we've all, as we've all talked about, some of you seen. I can tell you from being sheriff, and this is nothing against people who own rock or stone or anything, but we've had several complaints over the years about the amount of traffic, driving off the side of the roads. Talked to the, had to go out myself personally once in a while and talk to the quarry when I was sheriff, not recently. But there's been those issues, speeding complaints, not on, just on my road, but sixty-six. I passed two semi, or two rock hauling units today on a township road that backs up, meets up to here. There's no way. I'm not going to lie about anything, I'm off the side of the roads. And he's not crowding me, I'm not saying that, but I'm off the side of the road. I understand that there's rules and that Mr. Weber or Mr. Hirschfeld can tell him and warn him, but that doesn't always happen. And you guys have been in the business long enough to know that that doesn't always happen when you tell them to slow down. That, that doesn't always work. I just, I was told by, I'm not going to go personal here, but I was told by, let's just say, some people in the township who hold positions, that he, that those people, these people have to not only think about individuals, but they also have to think, or not just think about select few, but they have to feel what, think about what's in the best interest of the entire Noble Township. Well, it appears to me that we ought to think about not just a few and think about what's in the best interest of everyone here and not just a few choice people who either can't get along for some reason, can't agree. I don't know what it is, but I'm not so sure we need two more or another quarry in the township.
I believe the next name is Walt Schmidt.
That'd be me, and we don't really need other sign that in case they needed to speak.
Okay.
But that's, all my questions have been brought up by Jacob and Rayelle.
Okay, thank you. Jacob?
Barhost.
Barhost.
I got, more of my questions are maybe for this personnel than that, but I know earlier you had mentioned that everyone within two hundred foot should have got a notice. Going through Noble Township zoning stuff, when you go to industrial, it says, "A list of all property owners within five hundred of the proposed development." And that's in four oh eight dash six.
That has to do with preliminary development plan submission, not for re-zoning.
Not for re-zoning, okay. And I didn't know that, so that's good info. Also, on four oh eight A in there, it says that there are adequate public services, e.g. utilities, fire protection, emergency services available to serve the proposed development. I don't know how many people know this or not, but when you buy your household insurance, it's sold from, you get a fire protection and it's from one to ten. Our area is a ten. That means we have the lowest and least available responses available to us. So, we all pay extra for insurance for our house. My concern is now adding a second quarry, a second industrial site, with more employees on an already overstrained safety service system, who's going to suffer? Are they not going to answer my call because I fell or I got a medical injury because of Weber Materials? The lock fourteen road, it's about two and a half miles running back to where current truck traffic would run. I did a little research online, it costs two point five million dollars a mile to pave. That's a large lot of money. I don't know where we come up with that. I mean, I don't, I doubt Weber Materials is just going to do that. And besides that, even at that, everything done through the state has to be set up. You just can't pay for it on your own. And it also says that the proposed development will not create an overcrowding and/or traffic hazards of the existing road and/or intersections. The bridges, there's two bridges that would need redone. Those roads, lock fourteen, you can't run two standard pickups down it and we're going to try to send two commercial trucks with possibly semi-trailers and all that. What is also, I want the township to consider, that we will probably have to end up losing valuable residents, not just this farmland, but there's corners there that would have to, ultimately, the state, they would probably have to look into doing eminent domain, which would be buying that person's property to widen that road, therefore losing people in our township that we all cherish and love to live in. So, I guess I'm just asking, don't do what's the best for a few people. Take this whole room into consideration when you're choosing on what your decision is. room into consideration when you're choosing on what your decision is.
Hello, everybody, I'm Trevor Rohrbach. I guess my, let's start off here. I've been, I'm Noble Township for about 30 years, I'm 36, 37, who knows? But my biggest thing is, is since my dad passed away in 2018, my brother started, me, we started a cattle business. And I would say the agger for the cattle, as close as it is to where this proposal of this quarry is gonna be, I'm worried about my well. So, I know it takes at least two days, if not more, you can run into problems and the way my luck is, it's gonna take me a week to get a well in. Who's gonna truck my water in for my cattle? That's my only question. Thank you.
Hello. First of all, thanks everybody for coming out. I know that, as Ed mentioned earlier, this is the largest crowd that he's seen in a while, which I think we can all understand why. I appreciate you guys presenting your information as there were a lot of misunderstandings. So, what I wanna do basically is, is come to you from an outsider's spot. So, I'm not from Noble Township, I'm from the city of St. Mary's. So, when I moved out here, when we built our house out here in 2020, and it sounds that's when the contract started, we didn't have a lot of traffic and we liked it that way. We live right across from the beautiful, recently restored Lot 14 Heritage Trail. It's beautiful, yes, the current quarry butts up to that a little bit. However, this one would take up, I mean, you can see from this awesome map that was provided, it's gonna be a lot closer. So, it was very appealing for my family to move out here. I have two small kids, I want them to grow up in an area where they're not worried, where we're not worried about dump trucks flying up and down the road. I think that's, that's a whole nother story that maybe we'll hear from the experts on. But I really just wanted to express the concerns to, obviously, the zoning commission and thank you guys all for coming out and showing the support.
Hi, I'm Robert Brouman, I'm owner of Al Brouman Trucking. I'm one of the jerk dump truck guys that you guys see flying up and down the road, but that's aside the point.
Thank you.
I'm gonna tell you, I have a family of four, four little kids. It appears that there's trucks flying around, I'll guarantee they are not, because I don't have them flying by my house that way. I have the same amount of kids, I have the same amount of personal effect. So, that being said, I've done business, my father's done business with Conne, with John, with Mark, and with Kevin since this has started. I can guarantee on a personal note, Kevin and Mark have done 10 times the job of managing that quarry, of controlling what's going on, of being concerned about everybody's interest. They didn't, this isn't just a fly-by-night operation. These guys are in this for the long haul. They wanna provide a natural resource, not just for Noble Township, you gotta realize they're providing for the city of St. Mary's, they're providing for the county, they're providing for anybody else that wants aggregate material. From my understanding, as soon as this contract is over between Kevin and John, that place is closed and sold. The people who are going to buy it is going to be a large corporation, they are going to shut the place down, let the hole fill with water, and the price of material is probably going to double in this area, which means paving materials, building materials, what the county uses to build stuff, what the city uses to build stuff is going to double. Prices are going to go through the roof. The people who are gonna end up paying for it are the taxpayers, because they're the ones who finance the towns, the townships, the county, the state. From what I can see, you have to plan ahead. You can't control where the natural resources is. Limestone is a natural resource. It is following the vein of limestone that is progressing ahead. It is the logical and most economical choice to do it, to keep the quarry open, to keep it producing. I am, wholeheartedly understand, I don't know if I'd want a quarry in my backyard or not, but you can't just randomly dig a hole and start producing limestone out of the ground. You have to follow wherever God put it. And they're following wherever God put the limestone. They have to look out for their own interest as well, because what are they gonna do in 10 years? They have families to produce, the employees have families. There's no place for them to go after this shuts down in six years.
Go back to Perry's.
And I, there is no good answer to all of this. Somebody's gonna have to suffer from it, somebody's gonna benefit from it.
Twenty seconds.
That's it. I wish there was a better answer for it, but from what I can see as a non-expert, it's the best production and I think these guys will take care of you guys just as well or better than what the Hersfeld has in the past. Just because you don't know them, doesn't mean they don't care.
I'm like Bob on Brookside Trucking. He explained it pretty well. Pretty much, the biggest thing is if this quarry closes, expect your stone to go double. Three people, mixed competition, two people, pretty much ends up a dividing line. That means StoneCo or National's gonna double your stuff.
Hi, I'm from St. Mary's City Council and I know I'm gonna get the questions from people in town, so I just wanna know what, if any, benefits are gonna come to the city of St. Mary's from you guys operating or opening this up? And just to kinda echo what everybody else was saying about the narrow roads, is anything gonna be done that's not gonna be a tax burden on anybody in the city of St. Mary's Township or August County to have to do anything with the roads? And aside from being a council member, I'm also a township firefighter and years ago we had to respond to an accident with one of the dump trucks where a girl lost her arm and with that much more truck traffic, we have a lot more potential for that to happen. Response times out here aren't great and I don't wanna see a whole lot more of that happening, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Kyle.
Wanna thank you all for coming out tonight and I wanna start out with telling you all that I spent my whole life working on trucks. And most of these stone trucks, if they're small, they're gonna weigh 40,000 pounds and if they're large, they're gonna weigh 80,000 pounds. When you got something like that moving, you just don't stop if you wanna diamond. And out of my 40-some years of working on trucks, I've seen a lot of trucks that have been wrecked. So that's something we all need to think, living in the neighborhood, that these are dangerous and we're, we're gonna be moving onto a different road, a lot smaller road and there are school buses going down that road and then we got heritage trails. And I have lived there for 30-some years, right by the bridge, and the heritage trails, when it first started, there was hardly nobody on it. But I'm telling you, people use that all day long. And if you go by my house and you come up to that bridge, there's two or three times I've about hit somebody the way it is right now. It is a very dangerous place and I just don't think that's gonna work with dump trucks. The trail on that is not gonna work together. Something has to be done on that. If they're gonna start this, I don't know how you're gonna change it, but it ain't gonna work there. If they go down to the church, that way it'll probably work, but then we come into another problem. If it goes to, if they all go to the church, the road's not wide enough. Why own land on both sides of that road? Am I gonna have to give a bunch of my land up to them too? And then we go into the third problem. What about dust? Everybody tells me that if you're a farmer and you have a quarry by ya, this dust goes up in the air when they blast, anytime they drive around there. I know they're supposed to keep it watered down, but that dust is gonna get on my crops, especially like the bean leaves. And if the rain don't take it off, who's gonna lose? Me. My yields are gonna go down. I do not want that quarry there.
Hi, I'm Steve Collier. My wife is Carol Hersfeld, so I'm part of the ownership of Calx. We're along with Terry and John and brother-in-law Steve. This quarry has been there for 45 years. Forty-five years. Bob Hersfeld started this 45 years ago. We dispute the facts that were said before about what resources are available. There is a lease agreement in place, that lease agreement has six more years to run. Okay? The resources available in the ground have nothing to do with the lease term. We've calculated, John has calculated, the resources in the ground and we know there are over 40 years of resources in the ground. I see shaking of heads. You've got your opinions, we've got our opinions. Right? Facts are facts. Well, we can have, we can have a fact person if he's got facts, bring them forward, that's for sure. And sadly, the other part, when going after my brother-in-law previously, my brother-in-law knew nothing about this filing. Mr. Weber's in business with John and he knew nothing about this filing. What does it say about somebody's business ethics when they go round the back of somebody to do a filing? I'm still not sure what the strategic intent of this is. You asked a very good question before about what agreement is in place with Mr. Stoner. Is that contingent on this going through? What term period is this for? Is the strategic intent to continue to operate this business, to flip this business? Nobody seems to know. Right? These are the actual facts. So I didn't hear those facts addressed at all. And again, when we're talking about resources and we're talking about a quarry that's been there 45 years, you should all know the facts. There are greater resources in the ground, I was down in the hole less than an hour ago. We drove down there, because it was years since I've been down there with my father-in-law Bob, that was very interesting. I was in the hole. You drove out when I was there. So I've seen the resources. Right? I know what it takes. I know what it takes to run a quarry as well. Everybody said a lot of really good things before, I could go on about roads. I live in Chicago. Hey, I live in a big city. I see trucks all the time. We got lots of big quarries too. I see what it does to infrastructure and roads. A rough estimate, a rough estimate, and we did speak to somebody, road infrastructure and bridge infrastructure, 1.5 to 2 million it's gonna cost. Who's gonna pay for that? I'll look up at the table, are you coming up with that? Is that gonna be the taxpayers? Who's gonna pay for that?
Sir, I think your advice and direction questions, as opposed to both of us, I would ask the council.
No problem, no problem. I was, I was asked to address the council and not the people over on the table of this. I'm not supposed to look at them, I guess. Okay. I made my points and I, I'd just like you all to understand what the facts are in terms of the difference between the lease and the resources in the ground. What has been stated is incorrect.
Hi, I'm Terry. I am the oldest of four Hersfeld children. My dad was Bob, a lot of you knew Bob, who started the quarry up in 1979, as has been stated now. I think I was supposed to ask them the questions, right? First of all, I'm kind of puzzled as how owners of trucking companies and people who don't own Calx, which is owned by my, me and my three siblings, have such insight into what our business plans are going forward. It's been stated by several people that we have plans to shut the quarry down. We have no plans, we have no intent. I'm the person who's the head of the, of our LLP, I'm the managing partner. We have no, nothing defined in our business, nor have we discussed shutting down the quarry at that point in time, so I would dispute the comment that was made earlier. Second, Mr. Weber was quoted, I quote that he said he has never said that he owned a quarry. Well, Mr. Weber also heads up a high school baseball group in the Toledo area where he lives. Let me give you the webs, let me read what it says on the website. Kevin's, Kevin's profile talks about he is the director and founder of this baseball, but at the end, he says he's worked in the construction materials industry for more than 30 years. He owns a stone quarry and trucking company in St. Mary's, Ohio. Now, let me repeat those words. He owns a stone quarry and trucking company in St. Mary's, Ohio. Now, if you'd like to look up this website. N W O Elite Baseball dot com. And you can look that up under Kevin Weber, where he has stated that he owns a stone quarry in St. Mary's, Ohio. That's just one of several mentions of him owning a stone quarry that we've seen and heard, so there, I would refute the comment that Mr. Weber has made that he has never stated that he owns a stone quarry.
I'm John. Nice to see y'all here tonight, appreciate you coming out. I got a few things to say. My question for them is, where is the exit for the new quarry gonna be? I don't know that that's been laid out. Where is the plant gonna sit? That would address some of Dusty's concerns as far as where the dust is gonna go. As far as them talking about the reserves, I think it's important to point out that they said that the, there's too much deleterious in the rock. That means the rock going deeper, that means the rock going deeper is no good and they're concerned about meeting ODOT quality specifications. I think the thing to keep in mind with that is that Seaver Stone Quarry, I think you do know where that was, up at Bloom Lock, they used a lot. That stone was all used in asphalt for decades. I don't think that was ODOT approved, it had excess of deleterious in it. The rock coming out of Ridge Quarry, which supplies several counties and townships in the area, it's considered to be great rock for chip seal. That has excess deleterious and is not ODOT approved. So, for them to say that they can't go down, I, I just can't buy that. I mined it, I sold it, we went down that extra 50 feet. It's good rock, it'll work good for y'all. As far as me not being able to run a company as Mark and Kevin have been able to run a company, yeah, they've come in and they've done a fantastic job. The place cleaned up, we're selling lots of rock. That being said, I was just down in the hole and I was commenting to my sister and brother-in-law about, I wish, I wish I could help, there's some stuff down there that they blasted high wall when they shouldn't have blasted high wall, it's a mess. I'm concerned about... I'm concerned about what else may happen if they go somewhere else on their own. They know a few things, they don't know everything. But that, that end, we don't all know everything. As far as us selling, that's a two-way street. Yeah, someday, we're gonna get out of the stone business. Someday Weber's gonna get out of the stone business. We all die. Things happen. So for them to say that, hey, six years from now, somebody else is gonna come in and the stone quarry's gonna be shut down, ten years or fifteen years, the other stone quarry may be shut down too. And who's to say that I'm selling to National or Shelley? I just went through an episode here where we had a Rite Mix company, which I really wanted to succeed, but we sold out because they wanted to sell out. I still have a stone quarry. I'm interested in running the stone quarry for a while. Yeah, someday it'll be sold, but I plan on being around for a while yet, so. That's all I have. Thanks for your time.
Last person on the list is Daniel Marvors.
One of the things I was brought up was lease and not own, and you know what the big deal with that is. So what my question, or you know, the concern is with the zoning, they have to put a six-foot fence up. Does that financial responsibility then lay on the landowner, or would that lay on the, you know, potential leasing of it? Along with that, where is the landowner? As part of the application process, I mean, you have the other people here representing that, speaking it, wanting it to pass, you have the landowner, who is a Noble Township resident, isn't here. And then long haul, you know, they talked about being here for a long haul, yet they're in a lease that, you know, may not be extended. They're entering into the same thing. It's still a lease. That's not saying they're gonna be here for forty years, fifty years, a hundred years. It could end tomorrow. And then the last thing is, they talk about quarries. There's Google quarries near me. There's Ridge Township up in Bannor County, Buckland, there's one in Salina, Buffton. I mean, we don't, if we call the quarry, we live two miles from it, we get charged the same price as if they deliver it to Salina. It does drag down price, happen more, but at the end of the day, it's the same fee, whether it's five miles, ten miles, or a half mile. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone that didn't speak whose name was on the list? I think that I covered them all. You were on the list?
Yes, sir.
What's your name?
Tim Knotts.
Pardon me?
Tim Knotts. Second on the list, I believe.
Sorry, I thought that was with the applicant. My apologies.
Hi, I'm Tim Knotts, and I own Ram Hauling in Lima, Ohio, and I haul a lot of stone for Mr. Weber and Mr. Bader, two outstanding gentlemen. I understand your concerns with the truck traffic because I'm one of them guys that owns those trucks. We have safety meetings weekly. We explain the hazards that can come across. I know that roads are narrow, but we didn't lay them. We didn't design them. With the quarry here, there should be something designed. I pay for about fifteen mile road in taxes a year. So I know what Mr. Weber and Mr. Bader's paying for. Two outstanding guys that would not, I don't believe, lie to you. The article in that paper or whatever about the baseball team, I believe it was a misquote because I don't see Kevin saying that. I've known Kevin when he worked at Shelley Material. I knew Mark when he worked at Shelley Material, and they're two stand-up guys that will work together with everybody in the neighborhood to make sure we can make it safe for you. I live in Lima, Ohio. I live on State Route three oh nine. I got truck traffic every day. I watch my children. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Now, is there anyone else that was on the list? Before I give it back to the chairman, I do want to explain the reason that I asked the one question about the ownership or if there is a lease, is because jurisdictionally, for this board, the zoning commission, to entertain this application, this, this, this application for the rezoning, the applicant has to have, be either an owner or have a lease on the property. And that's why I asked the question. The question then begs, and I want to ask counsel, well, maybe ask counsel, to address that, if not tonight, if this, if the decision is postponed for tonight, to provide some authority, if you would, whether an option to lease satisfies the jurisdiction for the request of the applicant. That fair? Okay. So that was the reason for the question. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the board.
Now, it's fine.
Right, sir. I just knocked out window this about three days ago. Behind Vicki and Rusty's house is a graveyard. People come up and try to address his issues.
If you stop up here, everyone else can hear your question.
It's behind these two people's houses.
Start again.
Behind Vicki and Rusty's house is a graveyard. And if this interferes in any way with that property, it's not gonna happen.
Thanks for coming out. Thanks for everyone speaking so far. Board, any questions that you'd like to present before we move forward? For the, for the applicants, questions for the applicants?
What are your plans for the exiting, exiting and?
Before that's asked, I want to tell you something. There's a little bit of the cart before the horse here, because what you're here, what this board is here tonight, doesn't have to do particularly with whether a stone quarry goes in or not. What go, what is before this board is whether the property should be rezoned from agriculture to industrial. If it is rezoned industrial, any of those things that are principally permitted uses would be allowed, and I can find for you what some of those uses are as part of your resolution. Page twenty-two, Kevin. Principally permitted uses are agriculture, the manufacture, compounding, processing, packing, or treatment of such products as candy, cosmetics, wood, drug, perfumes, pharmaceuticals, toiletries, I didn't read them all, warehousing and wholesaling, research laboratories and offices, newspaper and blueprinting establishments, contractor yards and storage facilities, manufacturers of clothing, leather goods, athletic equipment, metal processing, assembly of small products, outdoor advertising, plastic molding and extrusion, oil and gas drilling, and any other use deemed to be civil. Those are all principally permitted uses. If it's rezoned, those things can happen without any other activity. Then there are what are called conditionally permitted uses. Those are uses which may be allowed, but has to go before the board, the Noble Township Board of Zoning Appeals. Those include, and I'm only gonna read the one, quarry. So, a little deep in the woods, and part of that's because the request for rezoning said it is going to be for quarrying. So that's why a lot of you are here, and that's why you've asked a lot of those questions. But the question before this zoning commission tonight is in fact whether the property should be rezoned from agriculture to industrial. They now know what the plan is, so they can take that into consideration, but their decision is not final. And in many respects, the decision of the township trustees, when they get the recommendation either to rezone or not rezone, that's not necessarily final, because one, there's the referendum, but even if a referendum doesn't prevent the rezoning, it is that the time with the hearing before the Board of Appeals, that the issue of quarrying becomes important. That's where the real dog in the fight is. Okay? So I just want to make sure that everyone here understands that, because this is just the rezoning, not whether it's gonna be a court. He could change his mind and say he wants to put a warehouse for Beanie Babies. Man, that's a terrible example. Nobody has Beanie, I'm showing my age now. Nobody has Beanie Babies. Okay? So I want to make sure that the board understood that.
Having been in trucking myself for fifty or so years, not large trucks all the time, but single laps of trucks, and I get off on shilling your road, mire road, I, I get off because I, I bring ten-ton loads to your driveway. Meeting traffic means a lot, so we're, we're gonna come out of the quarry with, with the bigger trucks than what I have. Is my concern, who's, who's gonna be responsible? Will Weber or whoever pay for the widening of all the roads, the structure of the bridges? It's, it's, it's a concern to me, being that I am involved in, in moving trucks down them side roads, so that would be my concern.
I commend everybody for working on the petition. I just have a question for Ed. This petition, I don't know if we can accept it, since that would actually come after the township trustees meeting, and that, like Ed said, you would have to talk with counsel. So, like I said, I'll defer to Ed on what the viability of this petition would be, if we should accept such stuff in the record or not.
I don't believe there's any problem with you accepting the petition, which has indicated what the opinion of many of the members of Noble Township and those people that signed it have that, have an opinion about. But I will also say, this tonight is not a popularity contest. It is not how many people are here for and how many people are against. When you rezone, amending the zoning resolution is like a legislature. Okay? It's not like a court and making a judicial decision. It's more like a legislature, like the General Assembly or Congress. The really only standard is, is whether the rezoning fits into the area of the area to be, being requested to be rezoned, and whether it fits the comprehensive plan of Noble Township. With that, I did have one other question. I've said I've done this a long time, and maybe there's a trustee here that knows the answer to the question. When did Noble Township first adopt zoning? I believe it was in the eighties. But it might have been the nineties. Well, that's an amended. You think it's, okay?
Was it, you mean for the first board?
No, 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 I'm talking about when the township first adopted zoning. Would you concede that zoning was in place before your father started the quarry? Okay, his answer was yes. Okay. So, again, one of the things you're looking at is whether this property being rezoned industrial, not necessarily quarry, but industrial, whether that fits the comprehensive plan of the township when it was zoned.
Did he say the quarry was there before or after?
The quarry was there after. Zoning was first by a couple, a year or two.
I was gonna bring this up anyways, but in the back of the updated, the latest issue of the zoning resolution for Noble Township that's available online, I guess that explained a little bit of the story that went in after zoning. The current quarry was not zoned industrial use until two thousand eleven, and that was only due to John wanting to redistrict some other land that was not part of the quarry site at that time. So the original quarry site was not actually zoned industrial till two thousand eleven. I just wanted to bring that up as a matter of business. At that time, I have some minutes from that meeting. There was not near as big a crowd at that time.
I was there.
Yep, I can tell you who was there. The zoning commission members present at that time, Dave Stillwell, Vicki Nederman, Jack McBride, Howard Baird, absent was Dave Overman. Members of the community, Anthony Torcell, Craig Hertenstein, John Ankerman, Kyle Ankerman, Greg Leffle, Jim Johns, Toby Hertenstein, Bruce Stoner. So, you know, Dustin and... Well, my point being, you know, we had, you know, in two thousand eleven, that was rezoned, and, except, just wanted to bring that to light for everybody, just part of the zoning commission minutes.
Okay, so I wrote down as many questions as I could to ask the gentleman over here, the applicants. Some of them I missed, but I, I'll try to hit a lot of the questions from the public before we move forward. Good with that, gentlemen? As far as, and I, I don't know if, you know the answer to this, since you're working out of Hersfeld's property now, correct? That's correct. On the map here showed Hersfeld's property, where he could blast, do, do his quarry work. Can we pull that back up? Is that possible?
Yeah, so that, this green dash line represents the current permit limits for John's connect, I am seven three four.
Okay, so then the question was posed earlier, the truck traffic, the traffic, where's the stone going to be moved to if this new quarry isn't approved? How is the stone going to get from the one location to the, where's the stone gonna be delivered to the semis or the trucks at? Is it gonna be loaded from the people's houses surrounding those properties? Who, are they here? Are those people here? You, one of them way over here on the side?
Yeah, well.
He's talking about...
Yeah, over here, yes. So those folks that were just pointed, I'm asking, what about those folks? Or is anyone of those here? You're...
Is that double pass within the line?
Yes, my, so I'm trying to ask the question, or what question I'm trying to point out is, we were posed with the zoning question. Can we move this from resident, from farm to industrial? That's already industrial over there, based on the map that was provided by them. So if he blasts over there, we've still got other folks over there. And if they blast in the new section, we've still got folks there. So the question to you guys are, since you're out of the quarry right now, do you have a plan to continue, if yours renewed the contract with Hersfeld's or not, what's going to happen at the six years? Does, do they have the ability to continue blasting after the six years when you're going under someone else? going, under someone else? And if they, if you stay longer, a contract's reached between you all, and you start blasting over there, how's the road structure going to work with that? Being on the other side of the river, the other side of the woods, the other side, you have all the driveways. Long description, short question.
That's a good question, and I think council is right, that's a little, really, we're a little ahead of ourselves here.
Can you give him the mic?
These are the kind of things you talk about in a conditional use setting. So, but I kind of, hearing the point that's being made here is, Mr. Hirschfeld already has all of this zoned, and it's all permitted. Now, we are contesting how much reserves are left, but, you know, some of the quarry and trucking folks here can tell you, in the quarry business, you don't think in terms of even decades. You think fifty, sixty, seventy years. Quarry is, as someone has said, it's renewable resource, just like, most of my clients, to be honest, are farmers. I mean, I'm an ag lawyer. Quarrying is kind of adjacent to ag, because it's a natural resource, we all use it. Every road, every driveway, every house foundation, it's surrounding us. So we're thinking decades and decades and decades. If Mr. Weber and his other partner, Mr. Hirschfeld, were to continue indefinitely in this location, beyond the current six-year contract, that's a good question. And that's what we're seeing, is it'd be fairly difficult, because you'd have to jump here, jump here. That's why we're saying, it's much cleaner over here.
Do you want to answer a question where you're reading?
Pardon?
Do you just answer a question where you're reading?
Well, that, we don't have that yet. I can have the mine engineer, who works for both Weber Materials and Weber Building Materials, show you if he drafted a site plan, you know, that's way down the road, but I think you have some idea, right? Why don't you just show them that?
So are you asking from the existing permit or the new one?
The new one. Where are we reading?
Well, Stoner owns this piece here alongside Store, and they either have the option of looking at coming out here and heading up Schillinger, and making a left or a right on 66A.
Someone, they're going to travel south too.
Right, we're going to write it in the permit that there's not going to be truck traffic there. We've been in communication with the county engineer about possibly posting a note through truck traffic sign.
They do it anyway.
I don't have any control over that. The question was asked where the haul roads are going to be bringing the material in and out of the quarry.
Around the house or around Farm, or this corner?
Well, the first option is to come around the, I guess it'd be the south and the east side of the house, to make a straight approach up Schillinger, or the other option would be to come around...
Right into the canyon.
Yes.
Or...
Yeah, or, if I'm hearing you correctly, yes. Do you want to come up and see the map?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have people to hear?
I do, yes.
Do you have people to hear?
Yeah, what was your question? Yeah, this is Store here. Okay.
Please keep it down. The petition needs to hear. Please keep your voice up so that it can hear.
Right there in that curve, that's my driveway in the house.
Correct, yeah, so...
So that's not my property? How do I get in there?
According to the auditor's website...
Can you use the microphone?
Get her the microphone, please.
Nobody can hear, okay?
Well, I'm asking him, because I don't care if anybody hears me. I want to know, is that not my property?
These people need to hear you.
Well, I don't think they care, but...
They do care.
They care.
I don't think so.
Yeah, they do.
But you want to come out this way, is what you said, in between me and Vicki.
We have an option to come out this way, or we have an option to also redesign the haul road to come around your property and come out north of it.
So drive around me either way.
Yes.
But I'm going to say, this is my driveway in there, so you're going to come out through the beginning of my driveway, because the curve of the road is the driveway.
Right, and from what I understand, there is an easement to come out onto the, onto the road.
Easement. I don't know what's why not for that easement.
Next question.
Appreciate the, appreciate the answer. And then I had a follow-up with that, I don't know that. Well, and then there was a question about the canal. Is there going to be any, where's the canal at? Here we go. So, where you're currently touching canal, are we going to have, is there going to be blasting? And I understand that this is a zoning question, but, or zoning meeting, but questions were asked. Blasting next to the canal, is there going to be any trouble or any bleed-through with that? Like, if you blast next, is the water, the canal going to be damaged in any way? The canal going to be damaged in any way? That would, any more than what Hirschfeld's currently doing?
I, I don't believe so. Any, any issues that happened to the canal with blasting on IM-744, you know, may be similar to what could happen out here, but if you look at it, there's this much of 744 that's adjacent to the canal, whereas what Weber Materials is looking at is a significantly smaller piece.
Yes, okay.
Is this all of this adjacent to the canal? This whole, if I remember my geometry, the hypotenuse is, is all adjacent to the canal.
Yes, but what we've, what we've determined to do from preliminary mine planning is to stay fifty feet away from the county ditch, and not cross that. The green line represents a county ditch maintained by Old Ways County Highway Department. This, this blue line here? No, the green line right above. This green dash line represents the permit limits for... No, this, this line right here, maybe it's yellow, but that is maintained by the county engineers. Okay. Okay, thank you. Yes.
Hey, gentlemen, I'm sorry, but we're not hearing all that, man. We're not hearing that talk.
I was just wanting to further address your question about the canal and blasting. So blasting only fractures rock. We're going to drill typically a four-and-a-half-inch hole. So blasting will only fracture rock about three times that distance, or, I'm sorry, twelve times that distance. So if you have a four-and-a-half-inch hole, it's only going to fracture rock about fifty, you know, it's at a fifty-four to fifty-eight inches. So he's talking about a fifty-foot setback. It's impossible to fracture rock anywhere near this canal.
Do you have another question? Yes. A few questions here. Again, I'm trying, I'm trying to hit you guys' questions up. The dirt, so this section of Mr. Hirschfeld's current land?
Yes.
That's got, just from being out on that property, driving that road, that's a huge, huge pile of dirt, right? Would that dirt then have to be moved?
Right here?
River road.
River road here.
Right here, this, I think it's over here by Solomon's property.
That's 66A.
Okay, there, there's a pile of dirt out there. Is there, that obviously has been taken out of the pit, it, who's, is that a prop, is that going to be a problem if they stayed there to utilize that? Or would they have to move that dirt and charge more for the stone than basically, because they're going to have a million dollars worth of dirt to move?
I can't answer to the cost of that, but per the mining permit regulations, they will have to reclaim that pile of dirt.
Okay.
They'll have to regrade it to a minimum of a three-to-one slope.
Okay, three-to-one slope. So they're putting it back to a natural, natural...
Yeah, ODNR does not allow you to have high walls anymore on your mining plans. So you have to reclaim your areas to a three-to-one slope, a minimum six feet below the water line, and then you can have the high wall below that point.
Okay, so, question was posed to the applicants. Do you have any current plans in place for the roads or properties around that would assist in the expansion of what would be your property, your, your new quarry? And being, working with Weber, and you're the applicant, I'm going to ask you, because maybe you'll know the answer, or, I'm sorry, working with the Hirschfels, have they done anything that is being requested of you? So, the question is, in short, they're asking you, do you have plans to do anything with the roads or bridges or structures around for your, for your expansion, for your quarry? And if you do, if you advise, and then, since you've been working with Hirschfels, have they done anything themselves to, that, to do the same that you're being asked? Does that make sense? Is that a fair question?
Yeah, I, I can tell you, I have no idea what, what John or Conag has or hasn't done with any roads. I have no knowledge of that. What I can tell you is, we would absolutely want to participate in helping beef up that road. It only makes sense, it's good for the residents, it's good for the trucks, it's good for the traffic, so we would absolutely want to participate in beefing up that road.
Thank you.
Again, I don't mean to keep beating this horse, but a little bit of this is the cart before the horse. In that, just a second, okay? The, the beauty of a conditional use permit is that the Board of Appeals, when they're deciding whether to grant a conditional use permit, is they can put conditions on that permit, reasonable conditions. So the Board of Appeals may be able to consider and make its conditions, how are the roads going to be taken care of, how are the roads going to be constructed, how the bridges, bridge is going to be taken care of, who's paying for that? Those are all things that the Township Board of Appeals would be able to consider if this gets to them. All right? And I understand you had a question. Problem is, we set the rules that if you spoke, you had to ask the question at that point.
You didn't think you'd speak after when the zoning...
Well, that's why I said, if you think you're going to speak, you need to put your name on the list.
Does the plane play into this?
Sorry, sir, you're out of order.
Okay, so, and maybe there, maybe the questions will be answered through these next questions, hopefully for, pavement, obviously, there's some concern about if this quarry does, if Hirschfels do happen to close their quarry, if there's no blasting rights or anything like that, I don't, I don't know the innards of that. Again, I know this is a zoning meeting change, I'm just trying to ask the questions. Is, or, I'm just going to skip that one, sorry. Sorry whoever that one is. So you can answer the question, is there any benefit to the city of St. Mary's and/or the township for changing the zoning? That was a question posed, correct?
I was.
Again, I understand this is a zoning change, but I'm just trying to ask questions.
No, that's okay. I mean, the city of St. Mary's is somebody that we sell stone to, so I mean, yes, I think it would be beneficial to them, especially if we run out of choices.
A question was posed about truck traffic. I, I'm confused about the truck traffic, because, just, so, to clarify, for me as well, there, it was brought up several times about more truck traffic. I'm confused as to why there would be more truck traffic, just because we have another stone quarry. Okay, then I'll, I'll state it. I'm confused as to why there would be more trucks, because there's suddenly not going to be more people buying more stone. They're just going to have a choice between who they buy it from, so...
But each company will have their own trucks. So you got, they'll want trucks.
You have two companies who are in different sets of trucks.
Okay, so then, do you, do you have any concerns or any way to explain that? Would you like to explain why there's concerns about additional trucks?
I, I think it, four-hundred-and-thirty thousand tons were about a capacity, so it's just a shift of where the trucks are. I don't see the increased trucks. It'd be very similar to what it is now.
That was brought up before by the ODOT-certified stone. Would you please explain to the people that ODOT-certified stone can only be used on certain projects, such that require federal funding? If it's not certified ODOT stone, you can use it on your driveways, counties can use it for chip seal, but can you explain a little bit more into the ODOT regulation on that?
About, about eighty-five to ninety percent of everything that we ship out of there goes to projects that require ODOT certification. It doesn't mean that they're going to actual ODOT projects. We don't do a whole lot of actual ODOT projects, but the lion's share of projects that we quote or we bid, part of their specifications is, is that it meets ODOT certification. So then they know they're getting good quality stone.
Does that have to pass certain specifications of hardness and size?
Yes, yes, it does. There's a whole string of tests that they have to run in order to meet ODOT certification. And you have to test it weekly, and turn in your test results. Yeah, we're testing weekly. Do I answer your question?
There was a question posed about a fence. Is that relevant?
Yeah, I think, I think the questioner was looking at the, in the zoning code, as maybe an additional requirement under the specific quarry, maybe, that a six-foot fence... An actual quarry is regulated by the state, by the ODNR, and also some other entities, MSHA, which is Mine Safety and Health, EPA, and they have, you know, berman fencing requirements, but any of that would be on the, you know, that's not on someone else's property, that would be clearly on the Stoner property. And just to clarify, to your question earlier, we're here as agents for Stoners, I mean, they are the landowners. We have an option to lease.
That's, who filed the application, Howard? That was my question. The application was filed by Mr. Weber.
Yeah, it's Weber Building Materials as agent for Stoners, and I can get the, like a POA or whatever, you know, consent for that to you.
We're not a home rule township. We are a statutory township. I say "we," not "you." I don't live in Noble Township.
So the township can, even though they got, in the zoning, or, before the order...
They can adopt, they can adopt their own zoning resolution, okay? And if that's done under Section 5, 1912 of the Ohio revise code.
Instead of zoning, they have...
But the zoning code is permitted because of the Ohio revise code.
He showed me a question, asked me to address it about if it's, if it's ultimately approved, would the land be purchased rather than leased? And, and the question would be no, it'd be, the general way this works is that the land is leased, and landlords receive a royalty. So for example, and we probably should have, we should have led with this. You've heard from some of the Hirschfeld family today, the four Hirschfeld siblings are partners in a company that owns this land, that's called Calx. They lease the land to Mr. Hirschfeld, John Hirschfeld's company, which is called Conag, and then he has an operations agreement with Weber Materials. What, this side would be Stoners owning the land, and then leasing it to Weber Building Materials. And so Stoners would receive a royalty, and to address, there was another question there that I'll throw in, because it's right on point. The, the lease terms, and this is industry standard, typically long. I mean, you're talking thirty years with, with options, because, I mean, you've heard the Hirschfeld family's been here forty-some years, massive investments to start something like this, the payback is not a few years, it's decades. So that's, I mean, they would plan on being here for the long haul, and, I mean, it would be ultimately Stoners heirs, and maybe even grandkids, who would be receiving the royalties out of it, so...
Okay, well, I hope I hit most of the questions. I apologize if I missed it, but I got as many as I could to try to clarify any of the questions that you had for the applicants. I, this time I will turn time back over to Ed.
Any other questions from the board members? Okay, the board members, your, your, your option now is to, you can... And your third option is, is to not make a decision tonight and decide to reconvene within 30 days after giving public notice that you're going to reconvene, and at that point, you would not take any other testimony, and it would be just to make a motion to either accept or to reject the application. So Mr. Chairman, you can then call for a motion in any one of those options. I'll make the motion, we table it for 30 days. I make the motion, we table it for 30 days?
Ed can retable it for 30 days? I thought we had to decide within 30 days.
Well, you would have to decide within 30 days, so we can, if that's what you want to do, we're going to have to look at calendars, okay? Because I'm with a lot of townships right now, so I have to make sure we're compliant and we can reconvene at that time. If that's what you want to do, is to table this and reconvene within 30 days.
Yeah, I'm not against the table, just the 30.
It's got to be, yeah, it's got to be within 30 days. Do we have a second for this motion? It dies, and there's no, no second, so we'll move forward with a vote today. There's no second, then you can call, you call for an additional motion.
Okay, I have an additional motion to accept or deny this application.
I motion that we deny the application. I, I motion we deny the application.
First, denied.
Let it die.
Denied.
Is that a second?
No, I said, I'm, I'm not. I, no second.
Okay, so if there's no second, and again, it's only a four, because Mr. Weber accused himself, if there's no second, that motion to deny dies for lack of second. Is there another motion?
I'm going to go ahead and move to mo, or move to accept this for the reason that it's contiguous to what's already a zone industrial, plus it has to go to the step, to the trustees. We only provide a recommendation. Our recommendation doesn't, it may hold some way with the trustees, but they have to say, and then the zoning board of appeals has the final say on this matter unless, after the Noble Township Board of Trustees, unless some, there becomes a petition, like Ed explained, within a community. So like I said, we're just providing a recommendation. And this is no way a, you know, except there's multiple steps, so I move to recommend this to the Noble Township Trustees Board.
So the motion, the second, and you can call for the vote.
You do, so it's your chair. So all those in favor of the motion?
So all those in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion accepted.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Motion passed. Motion passes three to one. Again, so the next step is, the next step is, so they tell me when the next township trustee meeting is?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night. Okay, we'll get the recommendation done, and this will, and this will go to the township.
Can you call order?
I'm sorry, could everybody stand still for a minute? We're not adjourned. And we need to hear, yes. Okay, so the trustee meeting is April 15th. All that will happen at that meeting is the trustees will accept, receive the recommendation of the zoning commission, and at that time, they will set their public hearing within 30 days. We'll do the same type of publication that we did for this meeting. It'll be in the, it will be in the evening leader. We'll send it to the adjacent property owners again, and I suspect, you want a half a meeting here again?
This, oh, I want to ask.
Okay, I, I will get with you to, to confirm that.
Second Thursday is the 11th, that's tomorrow.
We moved our meeting, we've got another meeting, we've got the act tomorrow night, so we moved our meeting to.
Thanks for telling me.
Okay, so again, the 15th is when the trustees will receive the recommendation, and at that time, they will set the time for the, their public hearing. I very much appreciate with this bigger crowd, very much appreciate the demeanor of everybody, allowing it to proceed in an orderly fashion. Again, this is step one of many, many steps, so you'll all be, the notices will be provided as required by law for you to be present at the next meeting.
I'll be posting it on Facebook.
There's been no motions for adjournment, some people still have questions, please.
Well, it's up to them whether they wish.
They have that up to them for nothing we can do.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, or meeting adjourned. Go on, second.
Tell you about, I told you about what they were asking.